I'm good with like an hour or less.
Call the meeting to order for the Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2019-23 for November 19th, 2019. Those that'd like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Our Father, your love is everlasting, our will be done, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trust us against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is kingdom, for power, and for glory forever. Amen.
But ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, we do the world for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best, full, liberty, justice, and all.
Mr. President, I have one announcement to make this morning, and that is the proclamations to the deputies will be held at a future council meeting. The deputies had an unexpected emergency to attend to this morning.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Entertained a motion from council to approve the consent agenda, please, which is inclusive of all the legislative minutes and open work sessioning minutes, as noted on the agenda.
Does that move?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Minutes have been approved through the consent agenda. Good morning, Ms. Hurley.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this morning is the veto of Legislative Bill 2019-07 in charter provision for council's reconsideration, which is Section 411D. Legislative Bill 2019-07 to impose and declare moratorium on the issuance of building permits for agricultural storage tanks that would dissolve store or that would store dissolved air flotation washed down water from a rendering process was introduced on October the 1st, 2019. Council then held a public hearing and adopted the bill on November the 5th. The legislation was then presented to the county executive on November the 6th, for which he had 21 days to either approve the bill or to veto it. The bill was returned to the council office on November the 6th with the executive's veto. Per Charter, Section 411D, upon veto, the county executive shall provide in writing a statement for the reasons for the veto. The veto message shall be entered in the journal of the county council, and not later than at its next legislative session day, the county council may reconsider the bill. If upon reconsideration, at least five members of the county council vote in the affirmative, the bill shall be law. A copy of the executive's veto message is in the briefbook, and with council's permission, I will enter the veto message into the journal. A copy of the amended bill, as adopted on November the 5th, 2019, is on the council table.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Entertained a motion from council to reconsider Legislature Legislative Bill 2019-07 as adopted on November 5th, 2019.
Salute.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. I would note that I found that the veto message very perplexing. A lot of the comments in regard to the argument for veto suggested that the council, of course, didn't recognize the importance of agriculture, and we're a strong advocate for agriculture. There was a lot of great detail that it went into as far as the Right to Farm Act. I think if the executive had sat in on the work sessions or read the bill, it would have been very clear that the moratorium in no way attempts to challenge any of the compromises, any of the privileges granted through the Right to Farm Act. As a matter of fact, we were very adamant that this moratorium was to allow the planning and zoning department to make sure they had a completely inclusive permitting process, and that they were properly aligned with the Maryland Department of Agriculture in that same process. Nothing the council put forward referenced anything as far as the claims of a nuisance that are protected, as we all understand, by the Right to Farm Act. This was a matter to address zoning process alone, and that was the council's intent. It was also mentioned in the fact that individuals had referenced this as a slap in the face to the agriculture industry. Well, members of the council also discussed this matter in great deal with the public, with representatives of the poultry industry, the integrators, and the farmers. Covered all bases, and not one mention, under any circumstances, was made as far as this being a slap in the face, as was portrayed by the executive. So, again, I think ironically, and what the executive was concerned about, his case for vetoed, actually mirrored exactly the same reasons the council had already put forward as a defense for this very same bill. So, I found it perplexing, but I think that's important to be in the record, since it was stated as what I consider to be somewhat of a criticism of the council's attempt and a misrepresentation of what the council was doing in putting this bill forward. So, that's for the record.
It should also be noted that many members of the agricultural community came to the council meetings numerous times and contacted us numerous times about these sledge tanks, and they were opposing them.
Any other comments? Josh?
I've got a comment.
I would say, at the end of the day, it'd be nice if we could come out with a better recommendation for, you know, let's say somebody comes down the line with a DAF tank that's, you know, 10 million gallons instead of 3 million. We need to be able to make sure that we have the right, you know, right set of parameters in place to make sure that we're not, you know, adversely affecting more of our communities than we need to. And we are, without a doubt, I think everyone on this table, pretty strong proponents of agriculture in Wycomico County, but need to make sure that it's done in a way that, you know, that continues to make sure that agriculture looks like a strong part of the community. A lot of the folks that came out and spoke against this were, were in fact, members of the ag community who felt like this was going to make them look bad in the long run, that they could get more blowback than they need to. And we got a lot of good farmers in this county that are trying to do the right thing, that are trying to manage their land well. I think that we need to make sure that we have, at the end of the day, a set of parameters that makes sense for Wycomico County. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
Thank Mr. Paisting snitch my notes.
Yeah, I was going to say, I know it is.
But anyway, I have talked to members of the Farm Bureau and also some of the integrators. They don't have a problem with us putting this moratorium on until it's further studied. And that's what this is about. It's further studying it in our zoning department to make sure that things are done right, so.
And we hope the zoning department will move forward with this.
Yeah, well, in fact, that's almost exactly what I was going to say. I'll echo your sentiments, but right, yeah, this is just a starting point for us to now, right, you know, start working on this and come up with some good legislation for the future, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none. It'd be a roll call vote. Entertained a motion to, or we're already at the motion. So, all those in favor of Legislative Bill 2019-07 as originally adopted on November 5th, 2019, say aye. We'll start with, I mean, Councilman McCain.
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
No.
Councilman Hawley?
Aye.
Councilman Hastings?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ackley?
Aye.
Vice President Dodd?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So, that would be six in favor and one opposed. Legislative Bill 2019-07 is adopted on November 5th, 2019. Passes.
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 137, 2019, making a supplemental appropriation from contingency to MAC Incorporated for $35,566 to maintain funding for senior nutrition services. Many of you may recall that last spring, MAC was notified that their funding for senior nutrition services would be reduced 46% effective July 1st, 2019. MAC serves four counties, Dorchester, Somerset, Wycomico, and Worcester, and all of them are impacted by the funding cuts. Wycomico County's portion is $35,566, and we have Mr. Weston Young here, Director of Administration, if there are any questions.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 137, 2019. Does that move? Second.
Second.
Discussion. We also have Director Tingle here. Is that correct? Good to have you here.
Thank you.
No, thank you for your time, Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration.
Ah, darn.
Yeah, I got promoted. And if you want to introduce yourself.
Good morning. I'm Patty Tingle. I'm the Executive Director of MAC Incorporated.
So, I'm going to turn this over to Patty, but I want to thank you for your consideration of this matter. This is Wycomico County's portion, when it was discussed previously, where they do represent four counties, and there was a funding shortage. There was some conversation back in the spring about Wycomico covering the full amount and then getting reimbursed from the three other counties. But this is purely for Wycomico County's portion of this, and if you want to hear what it goes towards and the people it serves, we have Mrs. Tingle here.
Any questions? Mrs. Tingle, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I had read in one of our, one of the Mako statements, that you would be serving not only the aging population, but those with developmental disabilities under the age of 60. Is that correct?
Yes.
The backside of what? Okay, I wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Okay.
Can you explain how we got here?
Certainly. So, there was a consideration made by the Secretary for the Department of Aging in 2014, 2015, that the funding provided by the state of Maryland to the area agencies on aging, which MAC is the area agency on aging, for the four county area, would be reformulated. So, a new formula was applied in that time period that said 75% of the funding provided by the state would be based on population per jurisdiction. So, 25% of the funding would be based on the population figures in the poverty level. So, it's a combination of those two calculations that would arrive at the new funding. The Eastern Shore delegation, as well as other jurisdictions, predominantly rural areas, appealed to the Secretary of the Department of Aging and said that such a recalculation of that formula would be detrimental to services. And it was agreed, apparently at that point, by the governor to offset the funding for those cuts for a period of time, which was unspecified. It was announced in May of 2019, after legislative close and after county budgets have been heard, that that would now know that supplement that the governor had applied for that period of time would end, and it would end immediately, beginning July 1, our new operational year, is we would have to work with less funding. This didn't give MAC or other jurisdictions, particularly rural jurisdictions who suffered the largest cuts, the opportunity to do proper planning, to allow for reformulating our expenses, or even trying to do more things more efficiently. Understanding that MAC locally has been challenged because of rural delivery and has constantly sought to manage more effectively, more efficiently, we took in the last three years with some effort and time consideration, working with local vendors, and said, how can we, how can we cut our food costs? How can we manage our dollars more effectively? And we were working very lean. And then to have this May 1st hit us and say, now you have to cut even more, followed by a reduction of funding from the United Way of an additional 12%, which we learned about in September. So, we've, we've just had a year of detrimental impacts. Now, what that means to Wycomico County is we're feeding, on average, our meal deliveries, home-delivered meals, is 275 meals. In our congregate meals, we're providing, ranging up to 80 meals each day. So, each day, we're feeding well over 300 people. To cut that percentage down would mean that we either stop feeding that number of people, we reduce the number of meals that we're feeding, and we begin to take a look at either cutting out routes or laying off staff. So, we've been examining all of those opportunities. At the same time, we've been trying to educate our community and make them aware of our needs, the needs of our senior population, as well as doing some fundraising on our own. So, our community has stepped up. Our community has said, yes, we value the meals going to seniors. They have offered support, but those dollars are $10 and $20 checks of support. And while we appreciate those, they don't help in the long run as far as our overall. They do help in the short run, and we are very appreciative of that. So, we are open to any questions, very appreciative to any consideration you have.
Joe?
First of all, thank you for all you do, and I'm in support of this, but I do have some questions or suggestions. Do you work with any of the food banks to acquire any food that goes into these meals?
So, we're restricted by working with food banks directly. The nutritional standards by which the agricultural department puts on the Older Americans Act, funding of meals, limits our ability to work with food banks, although they do encourage creative cooperation. Typically, what we do with food banks is to partner in such situations where individuals who apply for Meals on Wheels programs may not be eligible for our services, but they are eligible for services by way of the food bank. So, we're able to at least meet the needs of some individuals through the partnership with the food banks.
So, you're saying you can't take donations from food banks for food that you distribute? Is that right, or?
Because of the way the inspection and the nutrition properties of the standards by way implied by, or interpreted by the state of Maryland, we cannot.
So, a can of beans from them is not the same as a can of beans that you buy from, is that correct?
I can only tell you what we can, we can operate within.
Okay.
Yeah. But I, and I do appreciate that. And our other challenges, the integration of fresh foods, I mean, you know.
Well, I understand the fresh, fresh part, you know, it has to be, you know, maintained, refrigeration maintained and all that.
Yes.
The other question is, the other counties, I see some of them's taken a lot bigger hit. Somerset's taken a lot bigger hit than we have. Are they stepping up to?
Somerset did step up, and they did cover the reductions made, as did Dorchester County. We have, Worcester County is still in consideration.
Do you, are you getting donations from area clubs?
We have seen donations increased from our civic and community groups.
Right.
Yes.
Can you touch on the cost per meal and what the average cost to take it to a home is? Because I think those are important numbers as well.
So, when we think about meal production at MAC, we can, we can look at it in three partitions, if you will. We have meal costs, we have the production and packaging costs, and we have the delivery cost. And so, each of those, if we look at just the food cost alone, our food cost is about $3.50 a meal. In our packaging and productivity costs, we pick up another $2.40. And in our delivery cost, depending on where a person lives, it can range from a dollar to $2.60, depending on our range. Comparative to other jurisdictions across the state, we come below the average in all of those costs. And comparative to local vendors, if we use a standard Grubhub delivery system that charges $3 for a delivery. So, we are below the average even as it relates to commercial distribution.
Thank you. How are you advancing as far as getting your message to the state of Maryland with the proper documentation of information so that they get a really good feel for what the true number should be?
So, I meet with the Secretary for the Department of Aging on a monthly basis, as do other jurisdictions. The Maryland Association of Area Agencies on Aging also works to educate other factions throughout the state who can also advocate for us, United Seniors, the AARP of Maryland, and other nonprofits who endorse the fact that supporting meals is supporting seniors, supporting seniors to age in place, to stay at home, not enter into a higher-cost, long-term care system. So, it makes sense in the long run to provide a meal at $3 to $6 to $9 a day than it does to provide institutional care at a cost of $300 to $1,000 a day.
The, yeah, I mean, and anything that this council can do in reference to try to encourage the local Eastern Shore delegation to, to help participate. I know that they are making an effort to try to resolve this matter. And that's why I think we need to really address this, because this is $35,566 for now.
Right.
I, you know, even though we, we certainly support the MAC Center so much, I think the local jurisdictions are already some, always somewhat reluctant to subsidize the state of Maryland's commitment. And we know that next year, this may be another issue if we don't take some strong measures with the state of Maryland to do this before the next session.
Right. So, we have provided information by way of Delegate Anderton.
Okay.
And we have offered information to Cherie Sample Hughes and our other delegates we've met with on a regular basis. We've also met with the Lieutenant Governor on this issue.
Okay.
So, we do continue to work to advocate for our meals programs.
Okay.
Yeah, the other, the other thing I just want to bring up is, not only are you providing meals for these folks, sometimes this is the only interaction they get with anybody else, you know, during the day.
And, and it's not unusual for our drivers, and our drivers are both paid and volunteer, to enter a home and find an individual on the floor, to find some of their housing in disrepair, to find gas leaks. So, we're, we're addressing issues far beyond that of simple nutrition.
Any other questions, comments?
I have another question for you. When you deliver these meals, do you also deliver food for the weekend? Packaged food for the weekends?
So, it varies. Our typical week of meals is four to five meals a week.
Okay.
Some of the areas receive deliveries once a week, and when we deliver once a week, we're delivering a fresh meal and four frozen meals. That will run them for the week. At this point, we don't have the capacity to do full seven days, but we do try to work to that four to five day.
Okay. So, if you were to receive this additional funding, how would you apply it to this program? In food cost, or?
So, if we were just to get additional funding beyond this 35, or?
With 35.
To get this 35. 35 would help us to meet our obligation as it currently is. So, if we were to receive additional funding, we then have to begin to ask questions about capacity and productivity. Currently, our cooling capacity limits our ability to expand. Cooling capacity as it relates to freezers and chillers, in order to cook the meals and then bring them to proper temperature requires chilling, or then the freezing. So, we are at capacity in those units now. In order to increase capacity, we have to look at either working at another facility or an additional $40,000 in chiller and freezer purchase.
Any other questions? All those in favor of Resolution 137, 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Resolution passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Next is Resolution Number 138, 2019, approving and publishing the dates of the official holidays for county employees for the year 2020.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 138, 2019.
Does that move?
Second.
Second.
Discussion. I think Bill McCady made a comment that his birthday wasn't listed on here.
No.
Can I make a motion to add it?
All those in favor of Resolution 138, 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Mr. President, that is all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any public comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns.
George Lanning, Wycomico County. I represent the Wycomico County Board of Electrical Examiners. We've had a couple of things that's happened, transpired over the past few months, primarily, I guess with, I guess one thing was, we had a little problem with qualifying an electrical inspector. But anyway, I think we pretty well got that resolved. One of the bigger issues, I think, that we have right now is that we have, it's in law, that as soon as an electrical code becomes published, becomes effective, or becomes available, that it is supposed to be, become, I guess, actually become the document as far as it's being utilized by the county. Problem is, is that in most cases, it has been, in the past, I guess this thing came into effect, I guess sometime, maybe like 10 years ago, or so, six years ago, that the board didn't have any, at least didn't, apparently didn't have any input as to that statute being placed into the ordinance. So, as, there's roughly some 5,000 changes that occurs in a three-year cycle onto an electrical, in the electrical code. So, we have very little time. When the, when the thing becomes effective, usually if it becomes, say, published, and then put out to press and is available in October, and then this becomes law in the following year, then there's only like a three-month interval there that anybody has any chance to even look at the, look at the context of the, of the changes and make a determination as to whether there's problems or not, or whether it's going to have any, how much bearing it's going to have onto the industry. In the past, we've had some issues that have raised that the board, back in 2008, I'll give as an, for instance, in 2008, there were some texts that was into the electrical, you know, the electrical code, that doesn't make any sense in regard to safer grounding purposes and bonding of conduits and water piping. They ended up having to have a grounding conductor or ground bonding wire that was bigger than the pipe that it was actually supposed to be bonded to. So, of course, at that point in time, we were able to have that deleted from our code. What we'd like to do is something where we didn't have any input as far as what was actually, you know, what we haven't had any input, is according to the way this thing is written, I understand, is that once the code becomes effective and available to the, that it becomes law. We were hoping that maybe we could have some input, I mean, have this thing tabled, have some, some kind of, have some resolution here, that we would have availability, have a period of time, maybe a year, to review the code before it's actually instituted into law, before it becomes law. And, you know, I guess that's pretty much, that was just about the gist of it. We just wanted to make sure that any time, because like, like I said, the industry as a whole, like with the changes that actually are submitted, and what actually comes through is for, from the code, from the NFPA 70, it ends up being, I guess there's about like 5,000 submissions and about 3,500 actual changes that comes through in a code in a three-year cycle. So, that's a lot of information to try to disseminate and try to make a determination on how it's going to affect the county, as far as electricians and anybody operating in the county. There's a lot of jurisdictions, even here in the state of Maryland, that don't even adopt the code or still running two and three code cycles behind. So, some of those people are still like on the 2011, or we're on, getting ready to go into the 2020. It's just a little, we just needed a little bit more, I guess, like to have some input from the board side into what the county, before the county would make any kind of decision or something like that. So.
Mr. Lanning, for clarification, are you, are you referencing state legislation?
No, no, no. It was county legislation, and like I said, I think it actually was, I think it went in some, maybe like six or some odd years ago, maybe 10 years ago.
It was a complete revamp a few years back. I remember that.
Yeah. There was a couple, there's a couple of things that had actually transpired. I can't think right offhand what the other, the other item was.
Maybe we might suggest that you re-review this with Mr. Strasburg, and the executive branch could possibly come up with some recommendations. Most of it, I thought, was really based on Comar to begin with, but regardless, that might be, that might be the best avenue, and that can come forward to the council. We could try to make adjustments.
Okay.
I mean, what you say makes sense. Let's give it a little bit of time for review.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lanning. Any other public comments? Any other public comments?
I'll say I'll have him contact you. You, that's fine.
Good morning.
General comments?
Nothing else but.
Okay. A little bit late arriving because I'm teaching in the morning, but thank you, Councilman McCain. And I noticed Mary Ashanti is in the audience today. Thank you both for your participation on the forum, The Blueprint for Maryland's Future at the Downtown Library this past Thursday evening. Many thanks are extended also to Eileen Johnson of For Education and Chad Pavlikovic, who is teaching. He is an educator at Salisbury Middle School. The four panelists contributed the unique perspective of multiple groups concerned with education, parents, grandparents, the local branch of the NAACP, the local business owners and councilmen, initiator of community service, educators, and taxpayers. Led by Sean Johnson, the Kerwin Funding Committee member, attendees learned more specifically the details of the Kerwin Commission's recommendations on education. Mr. Johnson also explained what the funding formula will mean for the Lower Shore, in particular Wycomico County, through twenty thirty. Also, thank you President Cannon and Councilman Hastings for your attendance. I'm going to leave some information with all of you today. Like I said, I just came up from finding a parking place, and I haven't had a minute to get it out of my bag, but I'll be leaving some information about the Kerwin Commission for all of you. The incident at Parkside High School on Friday, November fifteenth, is deeply upsetting, and WCEA is doing all that we can to support the injured teachers. Sadly, this is one more piece of evidence as to why we need to do more to address student discipline issues in schools, whether lowering class size to increase individualized attention, increasing our numbers of counselors and psychologists in school setting, and holding students responsible for learning academically, socially, and emotionally, including accountability for their behaviors that negatively impact the learning environment. Action must be taken now. We cannot allow these conditions to continue. They are detrimental to the health and safety of educators as well as students, and make it hard to ensure that all of our schools are places of safety, learning, and the community that we all want them to be. Finally, I'm hoping that we may resolve the questions and concerns that you have regarding the nominating commission. The commission has worked diligently to find answers to your questions. You have said that you appreciated the work of the commission and that you did not see cause to make changes. I'm wondering if this is the last meeting that we will have with regard to the nominating commission. If not, I respectfully ask that you hold these meetings for your evening sessions. The commissioners give service without compensation, and attending meetings during this time of the day interferes with our workday, and it's really kind of unfair. Holding meetings without us draws questions about the intentions of the council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any other public comments? Take it up to you.
First, give my own to God, thanking Him for the opportunity to be here. My name is Mary Ashanti, and I'm president of Wycomico County NAACP. And to President Cannon and the council members, good morning. I rise to support Mrs. Smith and her recommendations. We too would like to see closure to this issue of the process to fill a vacancy on the Wycomico County Board of Education. We hope that this is the last, this open work session or whatever, and that we, you vote, and that we move on to something else. As you heard from Mrs. Smith, we have more important issues with what's going on in the school. When you sit down to do your budget, and we'll share that with Executive Carver, when you sit down and do your budget, please consider that we do need more psychological, psychologists in school system. We do need social workers, need social workers in school system, and we must have someone in the school, not people in the school system, that can work with the families, especially those families of young people that are creating havoc in our schools. Schools are for learning, they need to be safe, and so we must continue, because I know that you all have worked diligently. We must continue to see that this happens. So let us consider that. And for the outer community, this is just not a county council issue, county executive issue, or a school issue. It's a Wycomico County, which includes citizens, issue. And this is one that's going to have to be resolved together. But you can't take care of problems in the school without someone working with these parents, with the children. Not only do children need to be held accountable, we also need to be holding parents accountable. So since that problem seems to be getting worse, our county now sees us in a state of crisis, especially when we had to send three people to the hospital to be treated. Thank you.
Thank you, President Shani. Any other public comments? Seeing none, council comments. Josh?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I did, as Ms. Smith pointed out, I did attend the Blueprint for Education, Kerwin Commission meeting the other night, as well as President Cannon and Mr. McCain. I think the biggest takeaway for Wycomico County for the Kerwin Commission changes could be that, it could be a big investment for, into our county. The base pay of sixty thousand for salary, I think that was what I heard, for teachers for our county is, would make us more, in many ways, could make it a place that other educators might not overlook, or, you know, Wycomico, they might choose to come and stay at a place where it has great quality of life for educators, and that's what, that would be helpful. In addition, I'd say that the changes in the formula, from what I heard, take into account poverty, and of course Wycomico is a county that struggles, so both could be, in my mind, very big benefits from the Kerwin Commission. So that was a surprise to hear some of what I'd heard the other night, but also a good, looks like could be a good opportunity that we'll have to keep our eye on. Second thing I'll say, say that I was, this morning, I was with Secretary Schultz, Commerce. Mr. McCain is also over there, and some of the members of the administration. But there's a lot of folks around the table talking about the Eastern Shore, and it's good to be able to speak to the secretary and to say how much that we care about our airport and our port, and continue need for support for workforce development, and then that we're examining our water and sewer changes. So overall, it was really nice to be able to be in that meeting and to have the folks there, to the state folks, to hear what we were saying and to know what's happening in our county. So, thank you.
Cool. To what Mrs. Ashanti has mentioned, I received several emails from parents, students, educators regarding the safety of our school and the lack of support for the families of these children to have them move forward in a positive way. Dr. Hanlon and the Wycomico County Board of Education has been made aware. My hope is that they allow the community's voice to be heard, they encourage it, and they support them in doing so.
A couple of quick comments. Actually, I'll echo some of the comments that Councilman Hastings just mentioned, you know, this morning we were at a meeting with the Commerce Secretary for the State, Ms. Kelly Schultz, and the, you know, the good thing was, you know, there was a lot of conversation about sewer, which is one of our main issues, and I know just last week, and I'm looking at Mr. Dodd and Mr. Cannon, who was there as well with the Tri-County Council, we met about the same issue, you know, regional sewer system, and taking us down that path. So there was a lot of discussion around that because, you know, the whole purpose of the state's Commerce Department is promote economic development. So, but there was a lot of discussion about our airport, too, you know, and trying to get some help regarding funding with the extending the runway at our airport for a variety of reasons, just not economic development, but for emergency services as well. And I want to thank Ms. Smith for putting together, WCEA putting together the forum the other night. Ms. Ashanti, thank you for being one of the panelists. You know, I was fortunate to also be one of the panelists along with the other, there's four of us. And the best part about the meeting was the attendance. It was great to see so much attendance for people wanting to be engaged and learn about, you know, what's going on with, you know, the future of education in the state of Maryland. The problem we had was chairs. We had to go get more chairs, and they got more chairs, and still needed more chairs. So, you know, that's a great, I'm just always pleased to see that because, you know, the whole purpose of the forum was to educate the public, and we had a very nice cross-representation of individuals in attendance, and it was a very, very informative and very positive evening. Last quick comment, before we meet again, it'll be Thanksgiving, so just want to wish everyone out there a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Bill.
Yes, I'd like to thank Ms. Smith and Mrs. Ashanti for addressing the safety in our schools, for our teachers and our students as well as staff. I'm very concerned about that. I too got a lot of phone calls and heard a lot about it and have been trying to follow the situation. I'm hoping that the Board of Ed will be able to address this and make our schools safer because it seems like it's a weekly occurrence, if not daily, because it happens too often. And if you've got a kid in the school system, you'll know what we're talking about, so that is a concern to us here on the council as well, and I think we'll do anything we can to assist everyone for a good resolution. As Mr. McCain stated, I think it was Thursday, we had a meeting with the Tri-County Council on a regional water and sewer committee, and it was established that Wycomico County is behind in water and sewer, the county itself, not the municipalities, the county. And it's something we are addressing, and hopefully by January, we'll have a better idea of what direction we're going to be taking with that. So I thank you, Mr. McCain and Mr. Cannon, for participating in that. And it does include Worcester, Wycomico, and Somerset, and those two counties already have an established water and sewer plan. So hopefully, we'll get some results out of that. I would like to congratulate the candidates from the city of Salisbury and the town of Pittsville for winning their elections. Pittsville installed their members last night. Salisbury's is coming up. The town of Delmar is holding their elections today, so if you're in that jurisdiction, please get out and vote. Your vote is important to these people, and happy Thanksgiving.
Comments? General. Under presidential comments, I would just like to reiterate what was already expressed by Councilman McCain and Councilman Hastings. The Blueprint Forum for the Current Commission, very informative. There are things that, because believe it or not, there are things that even we still don't know as a council, as council members. So it was a different perspective, and I took a lot away from that. So thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you, President Ashanti, for your contributions as well, and Councilman McCain for your contributions to that event, and it was surprisingly a full house. Outside of that, Veterans Day Ceremony at Civic Center, attended that. I know that Councilman Dodd was there, and so was Councilman Ackley. Don't know if I've left anyone else out, but that's always a great event at Civic Center, where we recognize the veterans, which is so important to not only Wycomico County, but to the country as a whole. The census meeting, attended that yesterday, the city of Salisbury is sort of spearheading this, and the county has taken a major role in it as well, but we're trying to get the census out, awareness of the census anyway, and a meeting was held. As far as that's concerned, you have a roomful of thirty people who are just simply trying to make sure that when the numbers are counted, that everyone gets counted, because that's so critical for our county as far as funding when that time comes. So it's a very strong concerted effort to make that happen, and I'd really like to see how things are going. President Ashanti, you're involved in about everything, so you'll have, we'll have to put a ditto by your name on everything I talk about here. The Eastern Shore Criminal Justice Academy, they had a graduation at Warwick this past week, and congratulations to those individuals that are actually taking charge and advancing their careers to get into the criminal justice system. As well as Archon Welding, they're always pushing forward with workforce development, and they had a graduation ceremony for the metal fabrication. Their first series of graduations over the last ten to twelve years has been with welding, and it's been very successful. And these, you have people who are graduating, and immediately, the individuals who are at the graduation are the employers that want to hire them. So that's the opportunity that are being provided. Again, Archon has taken a very, Toroid has taken a very strong stance in promoting this effort. Part of that was the metal fabrication graduation, which was, it was good to see that. And lastly, Councilman Davis and I attended Reverend Lewis Watson's First Baptist Church Recharge, and it was very enlightening, it was a very interesting evening because of the, it was Bishop Thomas who spoke, and spoke really well. It's a lot of fun to participate in those events. And not only that, but they were recognizing elected and business leaders in the community, which surprisingly, I mean, I don't look for that, I never do, I'm not in it to do for that, but surprisingly, there's very few moments I can tell you my entire career when someone actually calls you and says, "We would like to recognize you," and this is probably the second time this happened. So I know, I appreciate the fact that Reverend Watson went to that, that, took that measure, and we do appreciate it. Outside of that, the capital improvement plan, the public hearing for that is tonight at Civic Center at six o'clock, and it's in the Flanders Room at Civic Center. So it's very important. It's very important, I think, especially for educators, since a large majority of our capital improvement program does go towards decisions as far as, that directly impact education. So I'm sure that'll be very interesting if you want to know what's going on with the airport, if you want to know what's going on with our infrastructure or anything else that's happening in Wycomico County. Outside of the meetings that are held here, the capital improvement plan is probably the most significant budgeting process that you can participate in and try to, you know, see what's going on and also express your opinion as far as what you'd like to see happen. So that will wrap up my presidential comments. That being said, I would like to entertain a motion. Do I have to read a special? Yes.
Mr. Cannon, I've got one real quick comment.
Sure, Bill.
I'd be remiss, I didn't say this, you know, I want to congratulate my hometown, Delmar, Wildcats, the field hockey team just won their fourth, I'll say that again, their fourth straight field hockey championship, and the football team is playing this weekend in the semifinals and trying to repeat again as state champion. So just wanted to mention that.
That's very worth it, very worthwhile. Entertain a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work sessions followed by closed work sessions pursuant to the general provisions, Article Section three dash three oh five, D. one and seven, as follows. Consult with staff, consultants, and other individuals about pending or potential litigation to protect the council's legal position, and to discuss the applicants for the internal auditor position in closed session to protect the privacy of the individuals. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Meeting's adjourned. The first item on the open work session agenda is the fund balance policy, ten-year financial model. Mr. Wayne Strausberg, Director, current Director of Administration. Yes, yeah.
I was afraid I'd lost my job.
Good morning.
Hey, you're always the last to do.
Good morning.
How's everybody this morning?
Doing great. We appreciate you taking this initiative to put this in place, Wayne. I think the fund balance policy is important.
Yeah, I, first of all, I apologize for the data dump, but I felt that it was important for council to- for council to have a broad view, if you will, of what I believe our fiscal environment is going to look like in the next three to five-year cycle. We did a 10-year projection, a 10-year projection probably loses a lot of validity after about the third or fourth year, because it's very hard to project what's going to happen in the out-years, particularly in environments that's very, that's very fluid. But we put this together, this model is now a model that we can use year after year, update it any time that we want to update it. It rolls to the departmental level, so if we want to take a look at what county finances would look like under varying assumptions, this model will produce that all the way down to the departmental line by line detailed, which I think is critically important as we're in very fluid times. So I don't anticipate that we're going to make any decisions today on fund balance policy, because I think it would be prudent of us to wait until we see what the legislature is going to do with Kerwin, and Kerwin is probably the biggest elephant in the room right now, and it's still very fluid. I served on the Mako Subcommittee that followed Kerwin, we met on a weekly basis, and it's still very fluid, and it's still subject to what the legislators are going to do, and that's anybody's guess, but it's something obviously that we have to pay very close attention to. So in terms of the 10-year forecast model that we've produced here, I want to go through the assumptions that we made. First of all, on the revenue side, we assumed fairly level employment. If you look at Dave Ryan's SWEED report that comes out on a monthly basis, you'll see that our employment plateaued, it's rising somewhat, but we're not seeing the kind of growth that we saw coming out of the recession. So we assumed a 1% annual growth in local income taxes. Property base trends and resultant revenue, I simply assumed the two-year annual growth that we're subject to under the revenue cap.
Wayne, has that been, can I ask a question, or do you want to go through all of it first?
No, you can ask me.
Is that 2%? Has that been the average over the past, say, five years or seven years?
Well, I used a 2%, Joe, because that's what we're limited to under the revenue cap.
But I mean, is that where it's prior to today?
No, because, no.
I mean, what is, what has the growth, has it been 2%, 1% and a half, 1.8?
The base, we still haven't recovered to the pre-recession base, Joe. The last triennial, we had about a 6% growth in base. We'll probably see that in the next two cycles. So in terms of what our property tax revenue increases have been, we've tried to live in the past several cycles with the revenue cap limit. In terms of projecting it, I made that assumption because that's really the upward limit, you know, saying that's our...
We know that's the limit, I just wondered what it had been in the past.
Yeah, I could get that for you off the top of my head, I don't know. But just from a forecast standpoint, I was trying to show council what it would look like if you make reasonable assumptions, and I ran these assumptions by Davenport and Associates, our credit advisors, and we had a good give and take. I didn't want to be too conservative, but on the other hand, I wanted to be realistic, and Davenport felt that what we landed on here was a fairly good set of assumptions, still subject to conversation. From an expense standpoint, I assumed a 2% annual rate of inflation in 2020, that's about where we've been running, but then after 2020, looking at a quarter of a point increase up to a 4.5% limit, and 4.5% has been the historic level of inflation in the country over the past five decades. So again, I thought that was a reasonable assumption on the inflation side.
And Wayne, the, I think they reference it in the CPIU, which actually measures like growth in, I think that's the one that measures like growth in like government expense and so forth.
There's a special...
There's a special one that measures.
There's a special, the CPIU is all urban consumers.
Is all urban consumers, right, but then there's the one that, you know, that kind of takes out your, you know, sort of the, yeah, there's general items and focuses on, you know, governmental and stuff, because, you know, they're dealing with things like health costs and things of that nature, which tends to exceed it quite a bit.
Right. Again, I'm being...
Right, but I get your point.
I'm being cautiously optimistic here. I think it's reasonable to assume, and remember, it's not only the cost of inflation to the government, it's cost of inflation for consumers, so that impacts discretionary spending, cost of inflation for businesses, so it's, it impacts not only the government itself, but it impacts our entire economy. Speaking of health, the forecast nationally for health cost increases is 6%. We factored in 8% because the lower shore health experience is not as good as the national average. We have a much higher incidence on the lower shore of cancer and diabetes and coronary issues. 8% has been our run rate, so we forecast, you know, the 8% out. Compensation assumptions, we assumed 2% to address both inflation and the increase in the minimum wage, because the $15 an hour minimum wage increase is going to produce wage scale compression. So again, I think frankly, I think 2% a year over the 10-year period may be a bit below what it may actually turn out being. Our departmental operating cost trending, we took a look at our five-year, our past five years trending and said, okay, let's assume that we'll continue to perform at that same level over the forecast period. Capital spending and borrowing capacity, Fed discount rate and impact on borrowing rates, I assumed 4% in 2021. I'm personally looking at the presidential election in '20 and what may happen with interest rates following that election. I think you saw the Fed Chairman late last week say that the Fed's efforts at quantitative easing, their manipulation of the Fed discount rate is pretty much done, that they've done as much as they can, so that if we enter another recessionary cycle, we're going to have to grow ourselves out of that recessionary cycle. We won't be able to manipulate a recovery through Fed actions. Again, if you return to a 4% interest rate and then 4.5% after, when you look at that in historic terms, that's still a fairly low interest rate environment. So in terms of fund balance policy, I assume that we would maintain unassigned at 17% of recurring revenue and the rainy day policy where it is right now, which is 5% of recurring revenue. Borrowing capacity and annual debt service, I just took it to the 12% policy limit and backed into that being the case, what our ability to borrow would be. So Pago, CIP Pago, what I simply did there was defaulted, said, okay, assuming the revenue projections that we have, the operating expense projections that we have, what's our annual operating margin in, after we pay our debt, what's left over for Pago capital? And you're going to see in the 10-year projection that there's going to be an awful lot of pressure on capital spending if these assumptions turn out to be valid assumptions. Any questions about the, about the assumptions? Any input on the assumptions?
You had listed the debt services as maxing out at 12%.
12% PNI on an annual basis.
Yeah, because, I mean, that is maxed out, right?
That's as high as we can go by policy, John.
Right, and I thought that in measures that we've been taking over the last few years, especially with the large increase in Pago funding, that the whole objective there was that we were paying down the debt to avoid getting to that 12%.
Right.
It seems like your projections are going just the opposite direction.
No, what I'm really trying to do here is show the sensitivity. I'm not suggesting that this is what we are going to borrow, I'm suggesting that if we go to our maximum borrowing capacity, what does that look like? What you're going to see... Can you put that spread up, Laura?
Yeah, you're doing it for demonstration purposes.
It's a sensitivity study.
Right, yeah, not recommending.
I'm not...
No, I didn't know, I didn't think, I just thought that that was what you were anticipating, but you're talking maybe worst-case scenario, maybe?
Yeah, what I'm trying to do is to show council what it could look like under these assumptions. Now, if we want to make different assumptions, we can put that into this forecast model and produce a completely different 10-year forecast.
Okay.
But for right now, I was trying to be conservative, but realistically conservative. So, Laura, okay, Laura could turn it up.
Where are you at? Line number?
Just scroll down to net operating, line 64. So I would call your attention to the 2020 estimate. Our net operating is $18 million 303, our existing debt service would be $14 million 552. So in, in general terms, what that allows us to do, if we don't want to go into fund balance, that gives us $3.5 million for Pago, if you want to look at it that way. So if you go then to 2021, we've got a net operating margin of $16 million 5, we've got debt service of 15.7.
Where are you on that second?
2021, if you drop down to line 60...
64?
64.
Kind of right in the middle.
So that'll give you net operating, John.
A 15.17, right.
I've got 16.5.
Did you say 2021?
2021. Do you have a different model up there?
Are you looking at the second? There's two charts, John.
Oh, you know what? All right, Wayne, I might be looking at the wrong chart.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I've got it, okay.
So what we're seeing in 2021, again, assuming that the assumptions are right, particularly assuming that the assumptions are right with regard to how the Kerwin funding mandate is going to play out, and that's something that we just don't know right now. What I used in this was I met with Jesse Reed and Mike Astoffer from the Board of Education, and we got the, we got, we got the base 2030 spending in 2020 dollars. And then at the time, the Kerwin Commission was anticipating that that base, which added about $2 million to Wycomico County, to 2.2, that that would increase at a rate of about 2.4% annually over the phase-in period, but that assumes a smoothing of that growth.
That's kind of like averaging it out.
And we know that that smoothing is not going to occur, because in order to get the results from Kerwin that are desired, you've got to front-load a lot of that spending. So we don't know what the, what the funding curve is going to look like, and we don't know yet what the state is going to pick up and how much they're going to downstream to the county. So those assumptions render, if you look at 2021, from there on out, you'll see that cash-funded capital evaporates. We really don't have any ability to fund capital expenditures through Pago if these assumptions are correct, so that funding of capital expenditures is going to have to come through borrowing. So to answer your question, John, that's why I went back to say, okay, if we're going to be under that kind of pressure with infrastructure spending, we're going to assume our 12% PNI limit and drop that number in.
Okay.
So again, this, this is just simply a forecast exercise to demonstrate that we will, I think, have significant pressure on our ability to fund capital infrastructure if these assumptions are correct. To go back to something that was said earlier in the meeting, and we mentioned this this morning at the meeting with Secretary Schultz, what is going to be critical for the county in any event, you know, irregardless of this, is that we're going to have to grow our way to increased revenue, which will require water and sewer in a designated growth area, and that's a critical component, because we've got to build our base, and the only way to build our base at any reasonable rate under state regulations is to provide public water and sewer. Not only build our base, but also maintain water and sewer in corridors that are already under pressure with regard to failing septic. So it, it's, again, it's a model that I wanted you to see because it, I think it sets the stage for a very cautious approach to our capital improvement plan this year and also our operating budget this year. I don't think that we'll have the requisite information that we need with regard to state actions until we're well into our budget cycle. So I think from the administration's standpoint, we're going to take a very cautious approach, very conservative approach to budgeting this year. Not that we haven't in past years, but there are, there are issues on the horizon that we really need to be paying very, very close attention to. The other thing that I would mention to you is that I'm concerned about two pretty significant revenue sources, the first being highway user revenue. Under the current legislation, where we are getting increases annually in highway user revenue, that sunsets in 2023, and absent any new legislature, we reset to 10%, and that's a big hit. That's a big hit for the county. The other thing that I'm concerned about is disparity grant. There was a lot of discussion during the Kerwin Commission meetings about the disparity in wealth, and that disparity in wealth had to be taken into account in terms of how much the local funding, how much local funding would be imposed on the counties. My concern is, is that, and I interfaced yesterday with Michael Sanderson, my concern is, will the legislature look at disparity grant and say, well, wait a minute, you know, if we have factored in wealth differential in the Kerwin funding mandate, are we now going to say, well, we've handled that, and the disparity grant is low-hanging fruit for the state to help the state fund its share? That's $7.5, $8 million a year. To put that into context, that's 11, 12, 11 to 12 cents on our property tax rate. So, you know, that's sobering, so we need to pay very close attention to that, and we need to lobby our delegation and anybody else who we can talk to, to do as much as we can to ensure that that disparity grant is not negatively impacted, and that there's some reasonable continuing restoration of highway user revenue, because we need both of those to keep our... Because we need both of those to keep our infrastructure in shape.
Sounds like you've worked your way up to twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent of what?
Of the max. Of, you know, you were trying to figure out what your variation, what your variable should be?
Yeah.
Right? Kind of sounds like it.
Yeah.
Mr. Schausberg?
Yes.
I, okay. I have a microphone right up to me now, so you can hear me. I just had a question on the, um, we have a SWED meeting on the economic growth and how education directly impacts that. And sitting through all the Kerwin meetings, they have great plans, but I didn't see much accountability on the financial end, what the plan is for that. So I was wondering what administration plans to do to make sure that these funds are implemented correctly and monitoring how they are spent over the cycle so that they don't run out of money. Seventeen counties had to pay back a portion of their disparities, disparate, I can't say the word, um, funding because they were not allocating it appropriately in education. I don't know if Waukesha County was one of those, but that's just showing that if we don't, if we're not monitoring the spending, this will come back to the local government to make up that balance.
That, that, that is a, um, yeah, that's a very, very complex topic. I would, I would tell you that, that, um, and I'm just going off the top of my head, but the vast majority of local Board of Education spending decisions, uh, are really, um, made at the state level. Uh, there, there is not a whole lot of, there's not a whole lot of leeway at the local level for how the Board of Education money is, is spent. Board of Education provides us with an excellent, um, comprehension, comprehensive annual financial report. In terms of us getting deeper into how the Board of Education is spending its money, um, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not prepared to really offer an opinion on that because so much of it is subject to, uh, to state authority.
And, and, I mean, I, I agree it is state authority, but then locally, how they're actually implementing it would be the question.
Yeah.
And I just, I just want to make sure that the administration has a plan on how they're going to oversee this large amount. I mean, this is, what, over fifty percent of our tax dollars? This is, this is not like just.
I, I, I can't, I just really can't comment on that right now because I, we, we haven't gotten that far down the road. We're still trying to figure out.
I think I've seen in their presentations, I think, if I remember right, I think it's, I mean, Ms. Smith, you might know, but I think it's only ten percent is discretionary.
It's a low percentage.
Yeah, yeah, it's like ninety percent is non-discretionary.
But I think, I think, I think the question that Councilwoman Ackley is, is asking is, is the mandated spending being spent in the manner in which it's supposed to be spent?
Exactly.
And, and that's a question I just can't answer.
Um, based on what you were talking about earlier, it, it does appear to me that, because I know we're throwing around fifteen, twenty, and you seemed to have settled here on twelve, seventeen. I know we're just in the working process, but don't you think that fifteen, twenty is a more representative, representable figure?
Yeah, I, somewhere in, in the data dump I gave you, oh, I had a sensitivity on what it looked like. Let me see, where did I do that? Okay. So our county fund balance, um, at June thirty, twenty-eighteen, which our latest audited figures, our unassigned fund balance was thirty-two point seven million dollars. Our recurring revenue was one thirty-five point nine million. So our, if we adopted an unassigned fund balance policy of seventeen percent, John, that would equate to twenty-three point one million. So we're already nine point six million above that threshold. If we adopted an unassigned of twenty percent, that takes us to twenty-seven point two, so we would be five point five percent over that threshold. So our current unassigned fund balance is at twenty-four point one. So what I was trying to demonstrate there was where we stand right now. What I would caution everybody on is go back to the fact that, under the assumptions that we've made here, uh, Pago capital gets very, very scarce. So I would not recommend, uh, that we, um, get cavalier about fund balance, in terms of spending fund balance, because I think, uh, we, we, we need to protect that fund balance to the extent that we can so that we can weather anything that's unexpected from a capital standpoint as, as we move forward.
How's that going to affect our bonding, you know, in our ratings if we drop that, you know? If we drop that, if we go to those figures?
Um.
I mean, if you read Standard and Poor, you know, our ratings right now, they basically, you know, they brag about our.
Our fund balance.
Our fund balance.
Sure.
And they use that as one of the reasons they, we are rated the way we are.
Right.
So, you know, what do you think about that?
I, I, I think, Joe, um, that adopting a fund balance policy of between seventeen percent and twenty percent unassigned, and this is something that I went through also with Davenport, that, that that's a pretty strong fund balance policy. I don't think it would negatively impact us on our credit rating. I'm more concerned about protecting the fund balance dollars themselves, uh, in the event that we need those fund balance, uh, dollars, because, again, as I cast this forward, assuming the assumptions are right, um, generating the kinds of surpluses that we've been generating in the past several budget cycles is going to become more problematic. You recall, or maybe you don't, the last meeting that we had where we discussed this, I mentioned that, uh, where we have really had strong revenue growth has been in local income tax revenue, not, not so much property tax revenue. So when your job growth begins to, to, um, level off, if you will, um, you, you, you can't anticipate that kind of continued local income tax growth unless you're, have a fairly strong jobs generation effort going on. And, again, that's part of the reason that we're so focused on the airport. It's also part of the reason that we're very, very focused on water and sewer, because that will generate that growth, that will generate those jobs, but that won't happen quickly. So my major concern right now are the next two, three budget cycles, as we're trying to grow into what I would call the new normal.
Yeah, and getting to Joe's question, the, um, the percentage you're talking about, like you said, they're, they're still very strong.
Very strong.
Actually, you know, we would still be one of the strongest.
Still.
In the state.
Probably would be the strongest.
If not the, the strongest, even with those.
As a percentage.
Right, right. And, and the, I mean, I think there's, I don't have an exact number, there's literally like ten other counties that have a higher bond rating than we do, but they have a lower percentage of funds than we do. And there's other reasons they have that high bond rating, but, but as a percent, we're, we're very strong regardless.
Yeah, the counties that have a higher bond rating, I mean, we're one tick below AAA. The reason that comparable counties have a higher bond rating than we do is their revenue production capability. They're typically metroplex counties, uh, they have a more diverse economy, stronger, you know, job base, stronger wealth base. So that, that, that's what gets them to AAA as opposed to us being, uh, that one step below AAA. From a, from an interest rate standpoint, it really doesn't make any difference.
Meticule.
We, 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 we have typically sold at a lower true interest cost rate than most of the AAA-rated counties. And part of that is because, uh, of our, um, our financial results on an annual basis and our fund balance, and the fact that we do have a very stable economy. Our economy is not as volatile as, say, a metroplex county might be, because we've got, you know, three mainstays here that aren't going to be cyclical. You know, the last recession, what hit us hard in that last recession, hit everybody hard, was that we had this speculative boom in real estate. And, and, you know, it was, it was a bubble that eventually had to burst, and it did. It burst big time.
Having another boom in real estate, yeah.
As, as we go through what, what people are anticipating as our next recession, um, they're not anticipating that it would be the type of hard recession that we had the last time, but it'll be what I would call a structural recession where it's not a bubble that burst, the fundamentals have to recover. And, you know, that, that, that takes a bit more time. So, you know, I, I'm, I'm.
You're sounding like an economist.
I, I, I actually think the biggest wildcard that we had, uh, you know, we, we, we sat in on the conference call with the GFOA on, you know, the, how you, how you build a fund balance policy based on, um, um, what, what could happen, what your threats are. You know, I, the biggest threat that this county faces right now is Annapolis. That's the biggest financial threat that we face. Mandated spending and/or, uh, taxation, uh, changes at the state level is probably the biggest threat to our county finances, and we have very little control over that.
How would you rank, uh, to me, I think one of the biggest wild cards in my mind is the federal government. We keep continuing to do continuing resolutions, you know, kicking the can down the road, but our national debt is ungodly.
Yeah.
And that created the structural debt in the past, which is why the state had to do what it's had to do and then kick it down to the county. So I guess in my mind, where are all the smart people, um, going when it comes to federal dollars? Because that, uh, that, to me, is a big challenge, uh, that I don't think anyone's really talking about.
When you have, when you have a structural deficit at the federal level, you, and you have a structural deficit at the state level. Oh, I'm sorry. When, when you have structural deficits at both the federal and the state level, and you have candidates running on a platform of increased, massive increased spending, you know, I'm, I'm a fairly conservative guy from a financial standpoint, uh, that, that, that's very disconcerting. The math eventually doesn't work, Josh. I, I, I think the math already isn't working, we just haven't faced up to the fact that we're writing checks that we can't cash.
You know, and getting to your point about how susceptible we all are with what happens at the state level, uh, getting to the, you're talking about the Board of Education, which is, you know, is the biggest part of our budget. Uh, when we were at the presentation, at the blueprint meeting, uh, last week, uh, one of the slides they showed was where we are today in terms of, uh, what percent of our current Board of Ed budget is county dollars, which I think is something like twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three percent, something like that, and about seventy.
State.
Two or seventy-three percent is from the state.
Right.
But the end of the blueprint, at, at the end of the ten years, eleven percent will be county contribution, eighty, it was like eighty-two percent will be state of Maryland. So in reality, I mean, the thing is, it's making us dependent. I mean, what goes on at the state is what's dictating what goes on at our county level.
Yeah, but that, I'm, I mean, again, I, I, um, that, that, that assumes that the state has the revenue stream to support that level of state spending.
But that's the, that's the blueprint, that's what the blueprint is, but it's, you know, but state becomes even a bigger.
Yeah.
Player at our, at our, for us.
Yeah. It, it's, I, I just, if you go back to Thornton, uh, Thornton was never fully funded. And Kerwin is basically ten times Thornton with no identified revenue source. The state really, I don't know where the state could cut services. I certainly don't know where the county could make any really meaningful cuts to services without getting into essential services, which is counterproductive. So the question in my mind is at, is at the state level and then at the county level, where's the revenue going to be produced that will support this spending? I, I'm not arguing whether the, the, uh, spending is well-intended, is going to yield proper results, because I'm not an educator. What I'm looking at is where's the revenue stream to support what the Kerwin Commission wants to see done?
But it, but it just goes back to your point, it's the influence of what goes on at the state's going to have a huge influence on us.
Absolutely.
You know, because we don't have control of what.
Which is why I say the state, the state's the biggest threat to our local finances.
I'm agreeing with you.
How does the, um, how does the equitable services in Maryland, how would that affect education? Because, I mean, although we're one of the lower funded on the county, we're also the second highest funded at the state level. So I'm not sure how that would come into play with Kerwin and having additional state dollars be put towards education.
That's a function, that's a function of the wealth formulas, because, uh, Waukesha County, based on the twenty-nineteen Department of Legislative Services, um, county, county governments, um, statistics, Waukesha County ranks twenty-second out of twenty-four jurisdictions in wealth.
Okay.
So when, when we say, oh, the state, the state funds this disproportionate amount of, uh, educational funding at the county level, you've got to bear in mind that the state, the state formulas on per-student funding are homogeneous. They're applied across all twenty-four jurisdictions, and you have very wealthy jurisdictions that pu- pull those numbers up, and you have very poor jurisdictions, uh, like Waukesha County, like Somerset County, where we're expected to meet the state average. The state recognizes those disparities, if you will, in wealth, and that's part of the reason that there's a disparity grant, a discrete disparity grant, but it's also part of the reason that the state funds a higher proportion of our per, per pupil cost, because they recognize that disparity in wealth.
And have we had, have we had a significant cut in the Department of Health dollars?
I don't think that we've had a significant cut. What I would, what I would say is that I don't, I don't think that the state funding, particularly for mental health, uh, has kept pace with what's going on in the environment.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that those, um, that the, the mental health and, and addictions, the homeless population, I don't think that the state and the county, as a result, have kept pace with what the true costs of those needs are. And, and that's, uh, I think at times we don't recognize the hidden, or not even hidden, the costs of, um, mental health issues, homeless, homelessness, uh, poverty, addictions. There are a lot of costs associated with that that aren't immediately seen. If you look at our, our detention facility, um, a significant, probably seventy-five to eighty percent of the population at our detention facility have mental health and/or addiction issues. And the, 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 the costs of housing and caring for those detainees is enormous. And, and it's, it's a number that, I'm not saying it's hidden, but it's embedded in.
Yeah.
The detention center's budget, and it's not immediately apparent to the general public that, hey, wow, wait a minute, that's a huge cost, and are we addressing that in the way that we should address it? I think not.
I agree.
As a society. You know, it's not just this county, this state, it's the. You know, it's not just this county, this state, it's the entire country. We've got a, a, a crisis with regard to mental health and homelessness, and we're paying for it.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Thank you.
Sure.
On, on part of your descriptions in reference to funding and the restricted funding, you had mentioned obligations, but I didn't see OPEB in there. Should OPEB have been, been in there as restricted funding, part of restricted funding?
Our, our, our OPEB, John, we are, we're fully funded.
But as a long-term policy?
Well, it's embedded in our, well, it's, well...
You talk about restricted...
Okay, so are you asking, should we establish...
In the resolution?
Should we establish a threshold for, we're not going to let our OPEB funding fall below X percent?
Well, you could do that. It, it's a little more general, as, in terminology, where it says, number two, it says restricted fund balance represents that portion of the fund balance that are spendable but must be used, you know, as directed by a third party. And technically, I guess, due to the government principles gatsby, we do have to maintain OPEB at a, at a certain level. I just didn't know, I'm just, you know, you have rate stabilization, stabilization, health insurance, and encumbrances. I thought that maybe OPEB might also go into that area.
The OPEB, the, the OPEB coverage, John, is built into the profit-loss model. So, in our expenditures, our expenditures anticipates that we will continue to spend or contribute to OPEB at a level that keeps our funding where it is.
Understood.
It's embedded here.
Right, but I didn't know if it also was something that needed to be included in the resolution itself. That's up to you.
I, I, I'd have to give that some thought.
Yeah, I mean, we probably, I mean, my guess is OPEB is, is already established in a separate...
Yeah, we're very...
Policy procedure.
One of the great things, and again, getting back to Wall Street, one of the things that the credit agencies and the purchases of, of our bonds really, really appreciates is the fact that our pension plan is fully funded and our OPEB, I think, talking off the top of my head here, but I think with the close of fiscal 2020, our OPEB is going to be fully funded. We need to keep that there. So, if you're asking me, should we establish that as a policy?
Right.
That's certainly worth discussing.
Yeah, I mean, if you're looking at establishing fund policies as a whole, that, that is an integral part of the bigger picture, but I'd just throw that out there.
Yeah, I would certainly, you know, casting this forward with future executives, councils, I would really hate to see, I think it would be, I think it would be misguided to begin to underfund pension and OPEB because the cash is there at the moment, because in the long run, that's going to come back to haunt you. So, if you're saying, hey, we want to protect our fund balance, do we also want to take a look at protecting those two, those two reserves? That's certainly worth discussing.
Any other questions?
Yeah, in reading the standard, Standard and Poor Report here, it's pretty interesting. They make a statement here about the management, financial practices. It says, "Bi-monthly budget updates including budget to actuals that council members receive." We don't receive those. How did that get in there?
That was, what year is that?
Go back here. No, seventeen, November of seventeen, yeah.
You may not have seen them, I used to see them. We're going to reestablish that.
I think, I think really the council ought to start getting a financial statement every month. I think that would be helpful to us.
I don't have any objection to that.
About where the county is.
Sure.
County feel about...
I think the public ought to see that, to be honest with you.
Yeah. Yeah, but I just wondered how that, you know, something like that gets in there when we know that's not been happening. I mean, did somebody say that it was happening?
If it's from 2017.
I mean, we weren't getting them then either. Yeah, so you're saying you weren't responsible for that?
I'm saying that that was in 2017, and I don't remember what was said or wasn't said in front of Standard and Poor's.
Okay. One other thing, you were talking about OPEB. What, what's the Board of Ed's situation on OPEB? I've heard that it's not good.
It's not.
Okay, what's your...
I don't remember the exact percentage, Joe. Compared to the state, we, we, our local board is better than most jurisdictions in the state, but that's sort of like saying they're the, they're the tallest pygmy, that the, you know, OPEB, OPEB funding for boards of education across the state is, is, is not strong. And, and eventually, again, going back to the, the state being our biggest threat, that, that's going to come home to roost at some point in time, because it will necessarily have to, because of the aging of the workforce. So, at some point in time, that's going to have to be funded.
Right.
The state, the Board of Ed was funded until the state dropped back on the counties.
Retirement, but they were better anyway.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was pension, yeah, that was pension. Yeah, they hit us, they, they, the state funds the legacy portion of the pension plan. We share fifty percent of the new, the annual reoccurring, or recurring expenditures. And that's, I think that's on the order of about a half million dollars a year impact on the county's budget, just off the top of my head.
Any other questions? We appreciate you sharing that with us, Wayne.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hurley, I know we should be able to do this, but any chance we can get this section of the brief book maybe sent to us in like a PDF or something, just to...
Take your financial model?
Yeah, yeah, just that, this little section of, from the work session, I mean, it looks like they'll just save that separately.
Yes.
I'm sure...
Unlike you, I don't like having to go to, to the actual brief book to find one element.
Yeah, it's about my pay grade to carve it out.
It's not large enough for me.
Just go up and say, "Save as," and put it in like where you put your brief book.
Well, he's looking just for that one piece. He doesn't want the whole brief book used.
No, I'm talking about this as one piece. Okay, never mind, okay.
You do that?
Uh, maybe not.
I can't cut and paste it, though.
I could extract it.
You don't need instructions from me by computer, that's for sure.
I have it scanned in, so...
Okay.
Have a separate...
Okay.
And there's comments around it too, Lynn, if we can get, you know, his assumptions and so for that whole, the whole section, if we could. Thank you very much.
That'd be great. Next item on the agenda is the letter of support for Waukesha County Youth Advisory Commission. The council has it in the brief book. I think we've had time to look at it. Any questions regarding this? It's simply a, a letter trying to establish this and move it forward. Any questions, comments?
I thought they had it at one time. Didn't they have, didn't that exist at one time?
I told, I was talking to Councilman Ackley about that. I remember going to Salisbury University, and they were on the stage, and each one of them presented their particular recommendations to...
Yeah, I thought, yeah.
Local government, and handed out a pamphlet about a half inch thick.
They grew up.
I guess we were staffed, they all grew up, you know, yeah, we didn't replace them.
Got to have new youth here.
But I can't remember what, you know, who that was under, whether that was a city initiative...
They sound like the same way, I just, yeah, I mean, it's a great idea and everything, I just thought that, I thought it existed.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Any other questions? You had a chance to look at the letter, and I guess the, there are also bylaws that have been proposed here. I don't know whether, um...
Where did it come from, the bylaws?
The bylaws, actually, Ms. Hurley found from St. Mary's County. And then I sent them to the state advisor for the, Christina Williams from, who oversees the Maryland Youth Advisory Council on the state level. She took a look at them, and then I had Mr. Holloway look over them and give me some feedback.
The only small thing was under Article III, when the body shall report annually to the county executive, the county council, maybe that should be prefaced with the fact that, you know, at a regular county council meeting, to avoid them feeling as if they might have to do two separate presentations.
Okay.
That's the only thing I would, I would, I would recommend, I guess. And Mrs. Hurley, where will this go from here? You know, suggesting that it come back, I guess the bylaws will be part of the resolution, or will that be a separate entity, an addendum to the original resolution?
It would be an exhibit to the resolution, once we get the endorsement from the county executive's office.
So, the bylaws could be changed in the future? We would not necessarily, would that stupid stuff go through the resolution if the bylaws were changed?
Yes, once we adopt them, then if there's any amendments, you would have to do a resolution to amend them.
Okay. Any other questions? No?
I did have, I had questions, just, I don't know if they were attached to one...
Question on your own?
No, I had questions for the county executive. I don't know if they're on, okay, they're attached to it. On who will be overseeing, who will be signed to, what department?
That would be, that would be important to know.
Okay.
Depends on who looks here.
Thank you, Mr. Holloway. Thank you for sharing your help.
Okay, so we have consensus? Yes. All right, great. Next item on the agenda here is the process to show the vacancy on the, discussion of the process to the vacancy on the Board of Education. I know that comments were made during public hearings by Mrs. Smith and President Shawnee. I, I think we've gone well beyond that discussion as to whether or not we'll keep it. Mr. Brumley, glad, glad to see you're here. We've gone well beyond that discussion as far as eliminated, things like that. Councilman Kane made a very good argument that, you know, we would want to maintain it and to continue as is. I guess the question for, the purpose for the meeting today is to evaluate whether or not there are ways that we could tweak it to make it a little more user-friendly as a whole, for the committee mostly. I think part of what Mrs. Hurley had sent to the council were references such as the number of public hearings that have to be done now, whether or not the number of members was a little overwhelming and it was difficult to get a quorum. Vacancy term, I think, was in question as far as whether it be the remainder of the term or longer than that. And I think there was also a concern that it was required that the appointment be done in sixty days, and that was almost insurmountable, just based on the timeframe, that ninety days probably would be a more realistic deadline for the commission to hold to.
Call Mr. Brumley up.
Ms., all three, if you'd like to step forward, please.
I feel like you're talking at them.
Yeah. I was just trying to set the foundation for where we, where we are in this process, because I certainly wouldn't want you to think that we were revisiting this to consider the elimination, because that, that's the moot point now.
You know, we've been ashing this out for a long time. I think that, you know, these are the folks that have to deal with it. And I think taking their, they want to give us their recommendations is what they need done in this...
Well, that's where this came from.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
In, in conversations, the fact that ninety, sixty days wasn't enough time, two public hearings was a little onerous, one was a little more effective. And, and the other thing is, I don't think this addresses, what do we do if there are, you know, because the, you know, there are only two applicants, what if there are only two? I don't think there's, that we've established a follow-up to that. What happens if there are only two? What's our plan B?
Can we take, Mary Ashanti, can we take each one, those recommendations and discuss it at a time and, and resolve it?
Yeah, the first one, I'd say, I guess would be the public hearings, whether or not you felt that two public hearings was required was too much, and whether or not we should reduce that to one. And the floor's open. If you could announce to the public who you are on the mic, make sure everybody can hear you, that would be great. So, whoever would like to start, President Shawnee?
Mary Ashanti, President Waukesha County NAACP. And I think that one public hearing well-publicized is, would be good enough. So, I would, we would support one public hearing.
Mrs. Smith and Mr. Brumley?
Joan Smith, President WCEA, a member of the nominating commission. In my opinion, I think that we should continue with the law as it has been written. In having two times, you do accommodate people who aren't able to make it to the first one, but like Mary, I also believe that people who are informed and interested in being a part of the Board of Education need to make it their business to pay attention to what's going on. And if we are doing our due diligence by sending the information to as many, and Mary's going to help us with that, different broadcasting groups as possible, then I think the job is done well as written or with one.
Okay, because the council also has its own public hearing. Keep in mind.
Yeah, yeah, but I was going to ask that, I mean, when you say two public hearings, you're saying...
They're required to have two public hearings.
There are two public hearings.
Yeah, and we have to have one.
But, but the one point that came to mind when Ms. Smith was speaking about, you know, people not being able to be in front of the public, that you also could have the situation where, I know at these public hearings, we let each of those candidates, they gave a chance to introduce themselves and tell them about themselves, but what if you have the first public hearing, and one of those individuals is out of town on business or whatever, you can't make it, they only got, you know, it's, it's one or none. So, at least if you have the two, even though, like I say, a two does maybe seem like it's, you'd rather not have, maybe have two, but if you don't, just having one, yeah, you, 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 the two or three, or how many candidates might be available at that time, may not have the chance to actually even attend.
You know, what may resolve that is that, that one term they always use in legislation, where they change from may to shall, and that way, you have a minimum of one. Others, they shall have one, that means they could have two, instead of saying, or no, excuse me, they may, may have one, which means they could have two.
Or they may have two.
Anyway, a minimum, a minimum of one, maybe a minimum of one.
At least one.
Yeah, a minimum of one. You think, Bill?
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, I mean, I could live with that. I, I, before we get too far with this, I guess the bigger question kind of becomes, is this even worth making any changes to, I mean, yeah, I'm just bringing that as an option, because I know at our last meeting we had, we had kind of, you know, decided, you know, we didn't really have an appetite. Number one, yeah, we weren't going to eliminate it, you know, that was consensus, but also with the number, you just mentioned the number of people, but that was also consensus. I thought we had reached a consensus there, that we weren't touching that either, because we, you know, we discussed the fact that it resulted, it was representing all these different segments of the community. So, yeah, we didn't want to start trying to carve out this one or that one, or arbitrarily changing the number. But I guess at the end of the day, maybe we just need to resolve right now, you know, but do we, you know, is there an appetite, you know, from the council and so forth? You know, it's a big deal, you know, to do state legislative changes.
Well, I don't want to lose sight of the bill, because at the time, it was getting, it got quite nerve-wracking.
Yeah, but it wasn't the process.
Well, I think it was a process.
There was Ben Brumley, Chair of the Nominating Commission. There, there was. When you, especially with the first time when we had thirteen, and you had to have two public hearings and tried to get the schedules of everybody to where we could plan them, made a big difference. Now, the last time with only two candidates, that was easier to do, but the, and like I said, in the first time, we were the first commission, no one, you know, we were the pioneers, we still are pioneers, in my opinion, and so are you. It was a lot more difficult. The second time around was a lot easier, because we'd already been through it once. We had some of the questions that we had were answered, and, you know, either by the Board of Education or by the, by you as the council. But I think on the terms of, I agree with John, if you, if you change the terminology into the bill so that you don't have to have it, when you only have two candidates like we had last time, which we were bringing from one district, so you're not going to open it up like you would even if it was the at-large position on the board, you, you're limited to how many people you're going to have apply anyhow. And that's what we had in the last one. We only had two people apply, but we were only going from District Three, where before it was the whole county and we had thirteen. So, I think that's, that could be...
and we had 13. So I think that's, that could be, if you change the wording so that it still is legal, and that we wouldn't have to have two, or you wouldn't have to have two, that could
But if you needed it.
Hold the whole process.
If you needed it, you could expand it.
Because I think the first one we had, we had the 13 people attend, and then we, the commission narrowed it down, and then we had the second one, and then we announced from there. So that's where we, how we use the two meetings. We invite all 13 back to the second meeting. We almost had like semifinalists, you know, if you were, if you want to put it that way.
So what's your rationale for changing it?
If, if we only have two people apply, I don't think you need to have a second meeting if people have already been there and asked the questions and done whatever, really, because the commission has no say at that point. If we only have two people apply, then we have to send, if it's only one position, you have to send two names per position that's open. So we would have to only send two names. So we really didn't have a choice this last time with who we sent. So in my opinion, what would have been the, the point or the rationale of having a second public hearing, when we, we've already had a public hearing and we had, only had two candidates? Where if you change that wording, you, you could only have one, but?
Well, the hearings are for the public.
For the public.
Have the opportunity to see the candidates.
That's right.
And they may not be able to see them the one time, so maybe the second time.
Well, let's not lose sight. It says, we're trying to establish a minimum. We're not, we're not going to change it to one.
Well, it sounds like we are.
Yeah.
No, that's not what I said. That's not what I meant.
I have to agree with him. It sounds like, so I take back about the one. I guess I'm concerned about revamping this, what we already have, because you have to send, all this revamping, you have to send it to, what's the process?
It's a lot of work. You're right. It has to go to state legislature, and it has to then, you know, go through their system. But part of the reason, I understand.
So is it worth going through all that, when, I, I don't think that it should be changed? I think we need to leave it.
I understand, Mary. Now, only one thing that is a concern of mine is the fact of this 60-day, 90-day. To me, that's the most important issue, whereas, you know, the commission was really up against it with that 60 days. It wasn't allowing enough time for the advertisers thinking, it wasn't allowing enough time for the respondents to turn in their resumes. And then the processes, when you had to get it to council, you were right up to the last second. The point being, the reason I bring that up, is that if we feel that that's important enough to change from 60 days to 90 days, you're already going to go to the state. So we might as well try to get as much of the minutiae out of the way on one shot, as opposed to going to the state three or four times.
I agree.
Well, I have, excuse me, go ahead, sir.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I guess I have a question. Do we really want, do we really want the Board of Education to be functioning with less than their maximum capacity? So if we're talking about 90 days, that's 90 days that they're not going to have that other person?
Well, the 90 days represents the maximum. You guys can get it to us in two weeks if you wanted to. I mean, you know, as quickly as you can go through the process, that's fine. 90 days is just the very last possible day you would accept it. So you could get it in within 60 days, you could get it within 40 days if you wanted to.
Well, if I, maybe just comment, I thought about this earlier when the public comments were being made. Yeah, we've discussed this quite a bit, which I think has been very healthy and so forth. But we have our WCEA saying, we just don't think we need to make any changes. They got the NAACP saying, I don't think you need to make any changes. We've got, we don't have anybody from the public.
We're still in debate. We're still debating this. I don't think it's
No, no, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying. I'm not saying it's not, our debate's been healthy and so forth, you know, we brought some of these issues up. But, you know, we represent the people, but we don't have anybody telling us to make these changes.
The guy in charge is.
Well, Ben said, well, you know, Ben said at the last meeting, said the two things, the big issue was, you didn't have any money, which we could fix, we could fix it without going to the state.
Right.
And, and the other issue was getting some, you know, staff to help do the meeting, which the Board of Ed said, well, we'll supply the staff. Well, both those things can be taken care of without changing the legislation. Those were the two things at the end of the day.
The only thing I would say about that is, if this is going to be ongoing, and, and I'm not saying you need to make all kinds of changes, but what I am saying is, there are some things that need to be put there, whether it's by the county, or if you have to do it by the state. So it's not, all right, this board is saying, I'll pay for it without any, without being written down to say it. Or the next board may say, I think it's the council. The first time we did this, that's what we went back and forth with, whether the council was supposed to pay, or whether the board was supposed to pay. And the board kept pushing it off on the council. So if it's written, then it's, that's what it is.
It is written, though, isn't it?
It's written in the law.
Yeah, it's written in the law.
It's written in the statute.
Yeah.
Thirteen, three, 13A03. The statute states that the Board of Ed provides staff for the commission. Early on, we at first said, should the Board of Ed, and I think the Board of Ed, not trying to speak for them, but I don't know if they were comfortable having someone from the Board of Ed work with us, because this was, as Ben says, pioneering, all new to everyone. I think that over time, we have developed some strategies with Mary's help, getting the proper channels to publicize the information will help us move through this more quickly. Those folks who changed hires during the races, they didn't get so fast by doing it in a couple of months, or even in their first years. They got speed lightning going on by practice and time. And I think that that's what we're doing.
So have you figured out the funding source for your advertising yet?
But I want to add something.
The Board of Ed said they would, they would take care of it.
They would provide some administrative support.
In the first go-round, I spoke with the county lawyer, I spoke with John, I spoke with Don Fitzgerald, and I spoke with the Board of Education lawyer. And just because it says staffing, does not mean funding.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, like, what does that mean? What exactly does that mean?
To me, staffing means they would provide someone to help us.
The Board of Ed, though, since then, has agreed.
But on the other hand of that, every time I called the board and said, and asked for assistance, well, we don't want to be too involved so it shows, because it can give the appearance that we are
Conflict of interest.
Yeah, conflict of interest.
Yeah.
And that's what I got, almost every time I called. So that's why I'm saying, if, that does say staffing, but it doesn't say funding, if you say staffing and funding, that's a little bit different. And, and to what degree of staffing does that mean? The first meeting we ever had, Donna Halen came, and she brought some, the ethics for the board and several other documents that she thought we would need to use. But after that, we got very little. Because like I say, every time.
Was Ms. Gosnell, who was here at the last meeting, said they will be there, they can fix that, they'll fix that. They'll have someone there to record.
And we can address that.
Ms. Gosnell was just, she's the secretary for the commission, that's all. She's, she's not with the Board of Education or anything.
So she was acting as a citizen.
But I think she had mentioned at the last meeting, in talking to the Board of Ed, she was assured it would be, it would be okay. And we can discuss that in our quarterly meeting with the Board of Ed as well. We can find, we can, you know, find she is, Mary?
Yes, I, I think what would be helpful is that from the county council, some decisions being made, talking with the board and writing, coming to this commission, letting her know what responsibility of the board will be, and whatever, so that when, when there's a meeting, then they need to send a staff person who is not, a staff person is not on the board. They're not coming there to make decisions. They're coming there to take minutes. So for them to tell them that, well, I don't want to send someone, because that's not their purpose. Their purpose is to come there, take minutes, see that the minutes are distributed the way the chairperson said distribute it, and follow up as secretary.
Right.
And so that needs to be very, very clear, and a person needs to be appointed to do that, so that there's not a problem. The chairperson of the committee should not have to be, it's not a paid position. So they should not have to be going through all of that. So that type of thing wasn't even cleared up before the commission took effect.
Right.
And whatever. So that created some problem, because that was not cleared up. The other thing is attendance. The people that did not attend, there needs to be a letter sent. And I guess the letter, the letter would be sent to the organization, or sent to, you all tell them where to send the letter, saying that this organization has not sent representation. We recommend they select someone else.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
We can do that.
And that, and that needs to happen. And that needs not wait until the next time. All those people that didn't show up the last time, a letter needs to go out to them and to their organization, so that if this occur again, they're going to send someone that will actually come to the meeting.
Yeah, that's a good point.
The NAACP representative came to the meeting, and whatever.
Okay.
And so those things, if those things are taken care of, and then somebody helping with publicity.
And so moving forward from that, if I may interject, the commission should really have adopted policies.
If I could interrupt Mrs. Smith real quick.
Sure.
Act 14 needs to change the tape at noon, and it's two minutes after. I don't want to lose that.
Yep. We could take a two-minute recess.
If we could take a two-minute recess, because none of this is going to go out to the public if we don't let them take their time to do that.